I thought I saw her walk back there, so I was just, I was, I looked underneath. I just stood and looked underneath. Yeah, she's just walking. I think we put it in the back.
This student, this student person is the...
Huh?
Uh, that's so stupid.
This one?
I don't remember.
I'd say put the speaker in the back.
Did you do the S K student?
Well, it doesn't recognize me.
It didn't, I couldn't log into mine, Tony didn't come do something for mine.
I have been trying to pass it on.
Did he go?
Yep. Uh, no, it's certain. Yes. Correct, correct. No, that's...
I'll just try to get it started. You guys are ready to hear it getting on.
Can you do this one?
Yep, just press that again. Goodbye, guys.
Thank you.
And I'll just need to get myself in trouble sometimes for that.
Do you want to keep up speaking to use it?
Looks good.
This one has a little more.
I don't have a problem with this.
I'll just hold on, if you guys start recording, I'll just do it, okay?
Box thirty-one, I got.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. As we get started, if there's anyone else who has filled out a sheet to speak in the open forum, you could please bring it forward now. Okay. Okay, the meeting is called to order. Do I have an approval to, uh, motion to approve the agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next we will go through our school, five school board basics. Put students first.
Follow the law and your own policy.
Respect the chain of command.
Based decisions on shared objective information.
Operate in the public eye.
Okay, next we will move on to our visitors and our public forum.
If you stand up, you know, I think that's fine.
Okay. The law requires that the school board meetings be held in a public, in the public, but it does not require the public to be allowed to participate. However, the board at Sibley O'Chieen Community School District values ideas and insights from the constituents and has allowed for individuals to speak at public forums for three minutes when the necessary form has been filled out and turned in before the meeting begins. Please also note, board members are not permitted to respond to speakers' content because it could violate the open meetings law. As a practice, board members will not respond to any public comment. The only time the board will respond to members of the public is for purposes that are part of the meeting's agenda and necessary for the, for that particular item of action. Mr. DeZao, did you want to say something?
Yep, before, before we move forward with that, I'm just gonna add, we understand that there's many people here to speak and thank you for coming, I appreciate that, and we want you to share your concerns and we thank you again. We also say if you speak, present your opinions and insights, but be respectful and hospitable. We're not here to attack each other, please present your opinion. Also, remember, our board meetings are streamed, so when you speak, you are in the internet, so be mindful of that in your audience, and those who are disrespectful can be warned and then asked to leave if it's a second time.
We will go through the list as they were turned in. Clint Ryder?
If you want a microphone, we'll have one up there available, if you don't think it's loud enough.
To our elected board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak on such a pivotal topic. I'm here as a parent, community member, and fan of all general sports to implore you to switch to the War Eagle Conference as soon as possible. The War Eagle Conference grants us the ability to have good and equal competition with similarly sized schools. Currently, it's as if we are a junior college playing Division One universities. I feel that facing equal competition will spark more involvement from our pool of students while improving attitudes, fundamental, fundamentals, and a willingness to work and achieve a set goal. To me, it's not about winning or losing, it's about the ability to compete. I think right now, we feel defeated before going into any game. This is not competition, this is submission. I'm not saying that we will be a powerhouse in the War Eagle Conference by any means. However, the argument that the kids just need to work harder and dig deeper is a lazy take. It's about numbers. Other schools are telling their kids they need to work harder too. It is important to remember that coaches still need to develop their programs and athletes will need to continue developing the necessary skill set for success. This move just allows the kids to more directly see the fruits of their labor. We all feel an attachment to the Sulane Conference and the culture it breeds, but that conference no longer exists. Changing conferences doesn't destroy our values, it provides an opportunity for us to create new traditions and rivalries with the same integrity we had before. The way I see it now, we don't have any rivalries because rivalries require competition between two sides. It is important to keep an open mind that allows you to see the bigger picture for our students. This move is for all our athletic programs. Change is hard and change is scary. It will require some thought and work from our leaders, but this change is necessary. Just remember, we are not switching conferences for the parents or adults, but for the well-being of the kids, so they can write a different narrative than the one they inherited. Thank you again for your time, please do the right thing.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Voss.
All right, I'm, I'm here on behalf of SO Baseball, High School, Junior High. Numbers, summertime baseball is always, always tough. I mean, we go to Orange City, they have twenty kids at the varsity level, we have twenty in high school. So we have freshmen playing against eighteen-year-old Division One baseball players. Not fair. Do they come out next year? Nope, now we have to try to find more players. Junior High, I think we had eleven, twelve kids, they combined to make one seven-eight game. It's not really fair, they don't want to keep playing. Baseball, every year gets faster. Average varsity roster in the Sulane Conference is twenty, twenty and a half kids. War Eagle, nineteen for their high school, about what we have. So I think it's good to, wins, losses, home competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Maureen Heilman?
I'm Maureen Heilman, a parent, speaking on behalf of the Bowlin families who have a seventh or eighth grade daughter competing in basketball this season. Marco, Creighton, Gamer, Itrider, DeBoer, Williams, Lopez, and Owens. Tonight I'm asking that you vote yes to apply to the War Eagle Conference. Another year has passed since you, the board, had a public conversation regarding applying to the War Eagle Conference. With another year of competition, we've seen how challenging it can be for all of our sports teams to compete against two A and three A schools in the Sulane Conference. Schools who pool, who school of athletes is greater. We now have learned that five additional two A and three A schools will join the Sulane Conference in 2026, making us even farther outlier in regards to size. It is time to give our student athletes the opportunity to compete against other worthy schools. It's time to give our student athletes the confidence to walk onto the field, court, course, or mat, knowing that they are well matched with their opponent. Currently, there are seven seventh grade girls and four eighth grade girls on the junior high basketball team. Because of the number of seventh grade girls need to play on the eighth grade team, some girls playing six to eight quarters a night. Other Sulane Conference teams have enough girls to field a seventh grade and an eighth grade team with a deep enough bench to suss two girls in when their starters need a break. This allows these teams to play fresh players throughout the year. Let's give our girls the opportunity to compete against other worthy schools who have similarly sized teams. This fall, when the Sibley O'Chieen football team competed against same-sized Class A schools, we saw success. The community rallied behind the team and enjoyed watching the generals in some close, exciting games. Having a winning season was positive for our boys' mental health and morale. Many of the teams, the football team faced, were War Eagle teams. Sibley O'Chieen may not have won all the games, but they were well matched, and this demonstrates the War Eagle Conference will provide good competition for our sports teams. Please vote yes to apply to War Eagle, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Next is Luke Heilman.
My name is Luke Heilman, and I will be speaking on behalf of the SO baseball team. I will also be reading Dave Martin's letter because he cannot be here today. Dear members of the Sibley O'Chieen School Board, I would just like to offer some of the baseball teams to ask on the conference' current situation. Last season, the Sibley O'Chieen baseball team won two and thirteen in conference play. Of those thirteen losses, six of them were mercy ball, with one being a zero to twenty-six blowout loss to Westside. The two wins were both against Sheldon, had scores of eight to seven and seven to four. We competed in Class One in baseball, while every other school in our conference competed in Class Two or Three. During the season, we played three one, three Class One opponents, and won one and two in those games. The first was a fourteen to eight win against Trinity Christian. The second was a one to six loss to a decent higher-class sports team. And the third was a four to seven loss in the first round of the playoffs to eighteen and twelve Kingsley Peterson. We ended up as district champions and shut out every one of their faces in the district playoff status. The truth is, leaving the Sulane Conference for a conference like the War Eagle Conference would not make as big an impact as it would for sports like baseball or wrestling, but it would be a step forward towards a more competitive baseball team. As I talked about earlier, about half of our losses in the Sulane Conference were mercy ball, and many other games were almost just as bad. However, we have shown that we can compete with some of the best one A schools in Northwest Iowa. While we still might lose some games, there will be the blowout mercy balls would not be the blowout mercy balls that we have in the Sulane Conference. The War Eagle Conference has a rich history of baseball, and teams like Renner St. Mary's, Ashmore Westfield, Gamma Catholic, will keep the conference very competitive and challenging. The second issue with our current situation is pitching. As a one A school with smaller numbers, we don't have enough pitchers to be competitive in every game. Because of this, we do not schedule many non-conference games, only two a season. We simply don't have enough people to pitch in games, and we end up overusing all of our people we can pitch and risking injuries to others. However, every other Sulane school has an urge to have someone pitch all of their conference games at least. In the War Eagle Conference, the other schools are in the same boat as us and limit the amount of games that they play. In Sulane, we have to play sixteen conference games a year compared to only ten conference games in War Eagle. Competing in a one A conference with one A schools would make it much easier on our pitchers' arm and improve our level of competition. I trust that our school board will do what they think is best for our community, districts, and community. I'm very thankful to have been a part, been able to compete as Sibley O'Chieen general the last four years, and I'm looking forward to finishing out my high school career strong in the upcoming track and basketball seasons. Thank you for your consideration.
Time's up. Sorry about that. Thank you, Luke. Next we have Paula Beltman.
Um, our family represents many entities of the Sibley O'Chieen School District. We are community members, staff, alumni, parents, we have a coach and a student athlete. One year ago, we were in the same predicament of all leaving the Sulane Conference and applying to the War Eagle. The survey results were seventy percent to leave the Sulane Conference of the community members, staff, and students. We were disappointed in the decision to take no action one year ago. This is not about one sport, this is not about the tradition of being in the Sulane Conference, this is not about the current athletes, this is about the changes we are seeing at Sibley O'Chieen. This is about the future athletes in the years to come, this is about the numbers. We have seen success in football when we play schools similar in size. The numbers of student athletes are decreasing. We have not fielded a girls' varsity team in two years, and several junior high teams are combined seventh and eighth graders. If you want to grow a positive culture, build confidence in students and athletes, keep staff, retain coaches, and continue to have athletes stay out for sports, something needs to change. We need to level that playing field. By moving to the War Eagle Conference, we will be playing schools that are similar in size. Many schools in the Sulane Conference are bringing two to three times as many players and field three teams in high school, JVR, JV, and varsity. In the near future, the Sulane Conference will be adding more schools, all larger than Sibley O'Chieen. Moving to the War Eagle Conference will not guarantee us to win every game or match, but it is competing with schools similar in size. This is exactly why the Iowa Girls and Boys High School Athletics Associations have classes in all sports and districts in football, to level, level the playing field and competition by the size of the schools. Many of us did not voice our opinion to the board members last year due to the survey results. We did not think we needed to, that was the whole purpose of the survey. We thought the seventy percent majority would be enough. Since then, we have made it clear to our community how we feel. We feel that the War Eagle Conference would be a much better fit for SO and that we were very disappointed that no action was taken. The school board represents the people at Sibley O'Chieen, not just a few friends or coworkers or just your child or favorite sport. You represent all of SO when you went with, you represent all of SO and you went with the minority. We are asking that the school board consider the recommendation made by Superintendent Stan DeZao to make a motion, vote, and approve applying for the entrance into the War Eagle Conference. We will continue to support our generals and cheer them on in all activities, and we bet you will be able to hear me for the stance.
General's pride. Thank you, Paula. Madison Nagel?
My name is Madison Nagel, and for those of you who do not know me, this is my second year teaching and coaching both volleyball and basketball here at Sibley O'Chieen. I first like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I believe that it is my job as a coach and a teacher to advocate for my athletes and my students. I grew up in a small town that had great participation in all extracurricular activities. Everyone worked together to help make sure it was the best experience for our students and encourage involvement. Sibley O'Chieen is a school that uses involvement now more than ever. The younger kids view these activities as something that they couldn't wait to be a part of, the team, the culture, the success. Success breeds excitement, school spirit, improved grades in test scores, and ultimately will increase enrollment because people will want to be a general. SO has seen several years of multiple programs struggling, decreased participation, students transferring out, surveys showing a need for change, and now adding the numbers of schools and the size of schools in the Sulane Conference. The student athletes, coaches, majority of the parents, and even the War Eagle Conference want us to make the change. Now, change isn't easy. Some people view change as a negative thing, but in all actuality, change needs to be embraced with an open mind and a positive mind. I love our school, the people I work with, the students I teach, and the young women that I get to coach. I want to see our programs flourish, and with reworking our culture, teams will begin to have success competing against schools more similar to their class, size, and classification. We want to develop leaders, positive and strong young men and women, to be successful in anything they set their mind to. We, as educators, coaches, and parents, need to help them in the physical and mental, mental aspect of the sport. These student athletes need confidence, they need to learn the power, the positive power of a growth mindset and how that can impact every single thing in their lives. At Sibley O'Chieen Schools, we build partnerships to challenge minds, to invest in community, and to embrace life. That is our mission statement, and that should be the goal of everyone here tonight. Our priority should be making the best decision for all of our students. By explaining this, quite honestly, there was not a downside to moving to the War Eagle Conference. I truly believe that by making this move to the War Eagle Conference, we are making a positive impact on our student athletes, the little eyes that are watching our role models and cannot wait to be a general like Ben someday, and our overall community at Sibley O'Chieen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Amelia Huxstra?
Hi, my name is Amelia Huxstra, and today I will be speaking on behalf of the SO softball team. Zero and eighteen, that was our record last year with the varsity softball team. We lost every game. I am one of the first to admit that it was a very hard year last year. I also want to add that five eighth graders were playing and pulled up for varsity. Last year, we lost to MLC Floyd Valley twenty to zero, and we lost to West Lion eighteen to zero. Do you know how big these schools are? MLC has thirty-two students on their high school softball team alone last year. We had nine players in high school, and again, five eighth graders. We lost by ten almost every game. One of the closer games we played was from the War Eagle Conference. The game was West Sioux, and we lost four to seven. The only game we got close to winning in our conference was against both Okaboji, being six and seven, and sixteen and seventeen. Even though we don't want to admit it, our school is getting smaller. We need to go to a conference that benefits our school. The feeling of losing affects the players as well. Students don't want to go out for sports if they know they are going to lose. We didn't have a chance last year, even the games we worked so hard to win, we lost. So I believe if we move to a new conference and win more in another conference, the numbers of students to participate in different activities will go up. That is why I believe that we should move to the War Eagle Conference, thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Kathleen Creighton?
Tonight I'm here on behalf of myself, other student athletes who have the same beliefs I value. First, I want to thank you for the privilege to express my feelings about switching conferences as a great opportunity for the athletic programs in this school to live in. I'm confident that you will consider my concerns and seriously consider with an open mind the information that is being brought forward to you from a balanced, open-minded perspective to make the best decision for the school and community. Last year, we were given the opportunity to fill out a poll regarding whether or not we were switching conferences. Numbers did not lie. These numbers show that our student body, the parents, committee members, and staff were all in favor of switching conferences. If over half the population surveyed were for the switch, how did we get to where we are today? Why were we even asked to take, was the decision already made? Our athletes, our student athletes deserve any turn. With the addition of six schools that have larger enrollment numbers to us, it is no brainer to take advantage of changing conferences at this time. It's no secret that in the last couple of years, Sibley O'Chieen has not been completing, competing athletically at the level that other schools in the Sulane Conference have been. It is no fun losing day in and day out. Now, are switching conferences mean that we'll be successful in every game? No, but does it mean that we have the ability to at least compete? Yes, we have seen what it looks like to be playing schools our size and playing teams like MLC Floyd Valley and Sioux Center. Just in the last two weeks, for instance, our girls' basketball team has played HMS and West Sioux with wins. With these wins came smiles and fun. It is so much more fun when you can compete with a team rather than getting blown out of the water. Again, will this be the perfect fix? Absolutely not, but it will help us warm up. For instance, our boys' basketball team has came, only one has came from a non-conference team, as well as our girls' giving wins. As we're well aware, we have not been able to have varsity girls' basketball team for the past two years. There's no way we can compete in the super conference with the numbers that we have, but in the War Eagle Conference, it is possible that we can have a varsity team with numbers similar to ours, and that will be a big plus in my book. An opportunity to join the War Eagle Conference will show us student athletes that we are valued. Learning to win and lose with grace and character is the biggest attribute, one that will follow you throughout your life, not just your athletic career. As a student athlete and a student, I believe our school, schools should be doing everything in their power to provide the best possible outcome for all of us. Therefore, I would ask the school board what plans are being made to make this a reality. In the end, it is about succeeding. Right now, we are nowhere close to succeeding. Students are putting in hours and hours in the school, in school and in sports. We deserve this change. This decision needs to be looked at, and the focus needs to be on the students who deserve nothing but the best. In closing, I graduate in 2026. I want to know that after we elect here, SO is proud, all the programs will be thriving because of the decisions that were made here today. Please do what's best for all SO, all students, and all programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Becca Walberg?
Hello, today I'm talking on behalf of the volleyball board. We wanted to first thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you about the benefits of switching conferences. Volleyball is a team sport, it heavily relies on each individual doing their job at every second of every play on and off the court. We also rely on having communication between teammates on and off the court. We rely on team chemistry. We rely on having teammates off the court to help those on the court. The list goes on and on, and fortunately, my teammates are phenomenal at all these aspects. But the problem is the fact that we cannot foster three-set teams, JVR, JV, and varsity, like all the teams in our current conference. Girls are having to play two or three games a night just to fill spots. Almost all of the War Eagle teams we play are in the same boat. Many of the teams in our current conference and the conferences we are joining easily fill three-set teams. However, the question is, if we are thriving fundamentally, why are we not winning games? If we look at our wins and losses from the past five years alone, we will see a pattern. In 2024, we went five and fifteen, eighteen. Our five wins were against teams not in our own conferences. Three of them were in the War Eagle, HOP, HMS, and a playoff win against West Sioux, the other being Estana, Leacon Central, and Edgerton in Minnesota. In 2023, we went four and eighteen. Out of four wins, two were against worthy teams, HOP and GLA, the others being Spirit Lake and Westland Mallard, non-conference teams. In 2022, we went six and fifteen. Out of the three wins, or out of the six wins, three were worthy teams, HMS and GLA. We beat HMS twice that year, once made a playoff win. GLA was in our conference that time, and we can always guarantee that we would compete very well against them. The other wins were Westland Mallard, North Union, and one-time conference win against Okaboji, even though we lost to MLC that year. In 2021, we went seven and thirteen, a strong year, we had seven wins. However, five out of seven were non-conference wins. The two conference wins were Okaboji and Rock Valley. In 2020, we went two and sixteen. The two games we won this year were JVR and ELC. Two unfortunate patterns. The first is, in five years, all of our wins, the second three games, were non-conference wins. And the second is, every single season was a losing record, placing last in every conference standings except in, except in 2021 where we finished third to last. Is staying in a super conference with teams who we will, who we have not been able to consistently compete with truly what is best for our current athletes? What about the little girls who look up to us? Your sport, the girl, the goal is not just to produce athletes, it goes to help develop strong women who are competitive in society. We believe that giving us the opportunity to compete will have a positive impact on much more than just the game of volleyball, the future of our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Ben Byers?
My name is Ben Byers, and I'd like to speak on behalf of my teammates and coaches in cross-country, track and field, and basketball. First, I want to talk about cross-country, track and field, and running against schools in our class and our size helps us out a lot with state qualifier and stage so we can b- better plan of where we need to be and compete with the teams that are in our class. Also, his next man up. With the numbers we have, we seem to really struggle with when one- With the numbers we have, we seem to really struggle when one person goes down or gets injured. Unlike teams like Unique Christian and MOC, we are not able to just have a sub-in that is equal to the one we are losing. Therefore, we cannot compete at our best. Moving out of the Sulean Conference does not just mean everything will be easier, but will be a big step in competing in a conference meet. If we were to find a more suitable conference where we can better showcase the talent we have, this will help us in the long run. With cross-country and track state qualifier being based on districts, leaving the Sulean will not hurt our chances of going on to state. As for myself, I am one of the most competitive people you will meet, and I will never try to take myself away from competition. I think with a change of conferences, we will still have great competition and better be able to showcase the talent we have. And that brings me to basketball and my experiences. In the last two years, I have not won a single conference game, and I can tell you from my teammates and myself, we do work very hard. Unlike a lot of people in the community say, we do work very hard and we try our best. Basketball as conference play is heavily affected by what conference we play in. One of us has one of the smallest schools in Sulean, being one of the few class-1A teams. We are not able to compete with these large schools that are in 3As such as MOC, Unique Christian, West Lyon, et cetera. We are spiritually outnumbered, and I believe with a change in our conference and schedule, we will have many more kids willing to try this sport, knowing they will have a chance to go against schools with similar talent and numbers as ourselves. As someone who voted to stay in the Sulean Conference last year, I believe it is now a better fit for us to move on to a new conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Tim Kruger.
Just wanted to speak to you about that point of vote considering the change to the War Eagle Conference. I'm a parent of a girls' basketball player. Last year about this time, we had attended a meeting regarding a possible move to the War Eagle. Information was shared, talked about school-size comparisons, travel time, and what switching conference would all entail. The survey was sent out to parents, students, and faculty, asking for their opinion on a move. The survey results were seventy-point-three percent in favor of switching to War Eagle. That is over two-thirds majority. I feel that number was largely ignored when it came to you voting on this issue the last time around. I hope you take in consideration what the people ask for, and not just personal preferences if it comes to a vote this time. Joining War Eagle is not going to solve all our issues, but I do believe it is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Katie Kruger.
Hello, I'm Katie Kruger, a sophomore here at Sibley O'Chee High School, and I've been a member of the Sibley O'Chee Girls' Basketball Team for the past two years. I am speaking on behalf of myself and the Girls' Basketball Team. I am speaking to you tonight to express why we should move to the War Eagle Conference. When we walk on court and see a larger number of girls on the JV squad than what we have on our freshman through senior team, this gives them the ability to press and outrun us all game. This leads to frustration and followed by follow-up trouble. Next, games are no longer fun. When on the court, you feel no support from the crowd or the student section because you are behind by large margins. This is reoccurring multiple times. But when we play 1A schools, we have been finding success and being able to compete with life-sized teams. This brings enthusiasm back on the court and the crowds and the student sections. Lastly, if anyone thinks that going to the War Eagle would not challenge us, they are wrong. There are still a lot of quality programs in this conference, and they will not be easily defeated. I believe this would put us on a more even playing field. That is why we support the move to the War Eagle Conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Mike McCarty.
Good evening, I'm Mike McCarty, the football coach, the track coach. You know, the one thing that's going on is in a lot of conversations about should we go or should we not go? And there's a couple of things that really stood out in my mind about this that we can't blame the students, we can't blame the athletes. We stretch these kids out into multiple activities. We've even had people have track meets with their parents early so that they can get back for other competitions and other activities. Right now, we've got some boys that have asked if they can too-sport in the spring, golf and run track. And we need the numbers in track. I'd love to have them run track. We don't want to take away from our golf program. But we can't come undivided. We can't let this drive wedges in between us, no matter whether you're a board member voting tonight or whatever your opinion is. We've got to stay together, and we've got to make the decisions best for all. It's best for the majority. And that's not an easy thing to do. There's a lot of pride involved. Back in the good old days, it was the Lakes Conference that we played. We moved to the Sulean because there were some more competitive-sized schools, and now we're at another threshold, another challenge. You know, when you look at what's going on in a lot of small rural communities, populations going up is not happening, right? I don't think it's conceivable to sit here and say Sibley's going to draw in enough people that our enrollment is going to go up, much from what it is. We might bounce up a little and then go right back down, but I think we are kind of what we are. So making things competitive for the kids, giving them the confidence that they can be competitive, and that's not the answer that everybody wants to hear in here tonight. I've got assistant coaches that are wrestling guys on the football staff. We got to handle the football staff. I don't want that to come between us. I don't want it to come between the coaches here in the school or administrators, board members, parents. We've got to make the decision that's best for the majority and move on.
Thank you, Mike. Lucy Hytrenner. And Paisley Cracus.
Hello, my name is Lucy Hytrenner, and I am in eighth grade. I am involved in cross-country, basketball, track, and softball. I am talking for myself and my teammate Paisley. We would like to leave the Sulean Conference because the other schools have more students that are eligible to participate in this sport. We feel like there should be a varsity girls' basketball team next year. We feel like we would more likely be able to compete against other teams in the War Eagle Conference. For our softball program, there are not many upperclassmen. Most of the girls' core teams are primarily filled with upperclassmen. In the eighth grade, we have four girls out for basketball, and softball, they're on the sixth eighth grade group. The War Eagle has more strong schools than this. We request to leave the Sulean Conference to join the War Eagle.
Thank you, girls. Josh Earl.
Good evening, my name is Josh Earl, head basketball coach for the Sibley O'Chee Girls' Basketball Team. Proud of life long in general. My wife and I moved away for a few years, and ultimately, this is the reason why I'm going to come back. Way back when, they had to light the gym by candlelight, the co-shirts that I played in the same gym and against the same competition. I look back at the competition and the changes since then. I have a lot of pride in the Sulean Conference, and many of you do here with me today, too. The proposed changes is not the Sulean Conference. I think we can all agree on that. This is not what it has been for the last twenty to thirty years. If you can't see that, the writing's on the wall. It's players' day. I want to talk to you about a few things, and not necessarily exactly what everything else has been said, because I do echo the comments that have been said and completely agree with me on them. But here's the thing, I've heard some comments, these kids don't work hard enough. Well, I take that one personally, okay? Nobody on the board was with us this summer when we practiced and lifted weights three times a week. We had over fifty percent participation. The kids that could not come were mostly working because their family does not have enough money to support their kids. This is the reality of where many of our students are at. So please don't tell me that these kids aren't working hard enough. I'll take that one personal. I'll be darn universal, okay? The next thing is, we do have a systemic problem here. We don't start young enough and have the right processes in place. I'm trying to help with that on behalf of the other basketball teams that are trying to help with that as well. Wrestling does an awesome job. We're working to get that, but don't mistake our systemic problem for hard work. We're all working together to try to make this happen. One quick comment about the competition I currently play. I ask most of the coaches when we go to these teams and you play them, I ask them, how many boys do you have on your team? It's alarming to me how many of these other teams have more players on their boys' basketball team than we have in a singular grade here at Sibley O'Chee. Most of these teams have forty, fifty, and even sixty boys on their basketball teams. Now, as I look at class sizes, forties and fifties. It's not apples to apples. We're not comparing the same thing. Next thing I want to talk to you about is personal bias. I'm a proud business owner here in the community and work along with some really great people. I understand, being part of a school board, making these decisions can stress out relationships. They can stress out your business, your company, whatever it is. Losing basketball games can stress out your relationships. It can stress out your personal and professional relationships. But at the end of the day, while I'm here, and I really, that wasn't three minutes, was it?
That was three minutes.
Please don't get all this for the kids.
Can you wrap it up?
It's been a minute.
Thank you, Josh. I really did try to shut my alarm off. I don't know how.
I thought that was three minutes, Earl.
Sorry. Roxanne Hengay.
Before I get started, I just want to say kudos to all the kids, kudos to all the parents, kudos to the emotions. I have lived through non-winning programs, and I have talked kids off the ledge from bad experiences. And so, I know you're putting in the work, and you're not reaping the rewards, and for that, I'm sorry. So, good night. My name's Roxanne Hengay, and I'm here tonight to talk from my perspective as a resident with no current student connection to the district. I'm also not an alumni, but I live on Century Park within the district with strong family ties to Sibley schools. My father graduated from here, my mother taught in O'Chee. I've also served as a youth coach and have been a member and president of the SO Athletic Boosters. Both my sons were involved in varsity extracurricular activities, including football, basketball, marching band, pep band, track, soccer, and baseball. This evening, the board has the opportunity to take action and move Sibley O'Chee to the War Eagle Conference. I was shocked when the board chose not to apply for membership in 2024. At the forum that I attended virtually, the information was clear and persuasive. The survey showed seventy percent respondents, and the student survey showed sixty percent supported the move. Yet, after hearing concerns from just two individuals about wrestling, a lack of action by the board resulted in all sports remaining in the Sulean Conference. Next year, three larger districts will join the Sulean with more to come in 26, 27. This raises an important question: Why are we so committed to the Sulean Conference? Since joining, Sibley O'Chee has earned just eighteen conference titles and two ties with only twenty-seven winning seasons across all sports. That's just an eight percent chance for any one team to have a winning season. If you're looking to support staying in the Sulean Conference with those statistics, in my opinion, it's not a very compelling argument. It's been argued that some wrestling programs in the War Eagle Conference need to pair with Sulean schools to have a program. Exploring an option like this, and we've done it with soccer and girls' wrestling, would allow our wrestlers to maintain the competitive environment they seek in a combined program, where there's a greater chance of having a full roster with multiple wrestlers. Partnering with others should be seen as an opportunity for iron to sharpen iron. My son, Owen, enjoyed his experience in the Sibley Sheldon Soccer Team and made lasting friendships. Likewise, Cooper Dejean from OABIGC thrived in a combined setting, and I'm sure Andrew Van Gikko from EHRV would also agree. Competing against larger schools can take a toll on students' mental health. Consistently losing when you leave your heart on the field or the floor is exhausting. When I coached my son's basketball team, I carefully selected tournaments with teams from towns of similar size. Many of these teams were part of the War Eagle Conference, and our parent group often commented, "We wish those were the teams we could play at the varsity level." This was eight years ago. Did we win every tournament? Far from it, but the kids felt like they could win every game, and they fell in love with playing the basketball. Out of the ten boys on that team, seven continued to play varsity basketball through their senior year, while the other three took on play-by-play commentary roles. So does the ability to compete, matter, and encourage students to fall in love with and participate in sports? My experience says it absolutely does. Change should be reactive instead of proactive has lasting consequences. Now is the time to make an objective decision that benefits the majority of students. I urge you to embrace the opportunity to move Sibley O'Chee to the War Eagle Conference.
Thank you, Roxanne. And Carrie Krogman.
Board members, Mr. DeZale, patrons of our district, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Carrie Krogman. I am speaking on behalf of Katie Schroeder and myself, the junior high girls' basketball coaches, to share our perspective on the changes we've seen at the junior high level. Our junior high teams face challenges that highlight a misalignment with the Sulean Conference. Unlike our high school, we have lower class sizes and only one grade per team to pull from, which impacts our ability to field competitive teams. Compounding this issue, teams like MOC and Sheldon have already dropped us from the volleyball, and will likely do the same for basketball. MOC already has, reducing our opportunities for meaningful competition. Our program operates as a single-site team due to our numbers, meaning some girls are playing one and one and a half to two full games a night just to field the team. Many of our contests are limited to three quarters or four short quarters instead of the standard four. Despite most teams expecting two full games or six quarters per grade, Sulean Conference teams have not shown flexibility in accommodating our situation, yet they expect us to adjust when they play in our gym. Additionally, rather than sending their A teams, these schools regularly group B, C, or even D teams to compete against us, making it clear we are not a priority. We have unfortunately lost the respect of our current conference peers because they do not view us as a challenge, starting already at the junior high level. From a high school teacher's perspective, it is heartbreaking to see the optimism and excitement of our high school athletes at the beginning of each season slowly and consistently drained from them physically and being replaced with frustration, discouragement, and hopelessness. Though the majority of our high school athletes are consistently working hard to become better and stronger, I see it. They are finding it almost impossible to compete with the Sue and Lyon county athleticism, height, and class sizes from which to draw athletes. A move to the War Eagle Conference would better align us with schools that share our numbers, philosophy, and degree of competition at the high school level. This change would provide our athletes with fair, competitive matchups and foster a more positive and respectful experience. Our junior high girls are already actively looking after high school careers and are questioning whether they should continue to participate if we remain in the Sulean Conference. For the growth of our athletics and the integrity of our program, we strongly recommend transitioning to the War Eagle Conference. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Carrie.
So, I am going to ask for a motion to move our... So, I am going to ask for a motion to move our, under new business, our consider of application to the War Eagle Conference and lead the Sulan Conference. I would like to move that to next on the agenda. Do I have a motion to do so?
I'll make the first motion to move our agenda to decide on the War Eagle.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, at this time, we will go ahead and jump down to considering that application. And Stan, did you want to share anything before we get started?
No, I won't rehash the details there, they're listed, and I think we know my recommendation. I will give my two cents for the first time and speak, I've been out before, but I feel this is the time in looking at that and hitting what we're talking about. It's not about one's board. I'm not looking at this year. When we look long range and just what our students look like, and when we're looking at the other schools, where we're participating against who looks like us in the face, where can we compete? I'm concerned long range with our numbers in the middle school. Right now with our junior class, we have great participation. And I'm not worried about wins and losses. I'm talking great participation. In two years from now, when we have a class that participates pretty heavily, what does that look like across the board? Because we have lower numbers, I'm worried about multiple activities not being able to compete. And I won't rehash, they've talked about softball, baseball, basketballs. We've had conversations with other coaches and other sports about this as well, even at times about golf. A prior golf coach mentioned not getting some girls to partake because they were scared to go up to schools that the girls only had golf. So, it's a multifaceted thing, and my opinion and recommendation, if you're going to ask me on that, will be to go to the War Eagle. Looking at the negatives, I know that a lot of people can have personal opinions on that, and trying to view that from a whole school perspective. Right now, I think the biggest negatives to doing that are the unknown, the fear of change. I think there's some others in there, but to me, that's right now what it is. If I honestly wanted to do what made me comfortable and personal, yeah, I'd say Sulan, that would be great. I've never not been in a school that I wasn't part of the Sulan. But I just think at this time for our district, this is the choice, and that is my recommendation.
I do want to share that as we start our discussion. I heard from a number of people, I'm sure the rest of you did too. Some of the points, and I try to always make it a policy to share what people are sharing with me so that we can hear that. A lot of the things that were spoken during our open forum, size and numbers, they speak for themselves. We are up a few this year, which we're grateful for, but, you know, we're all enrollment. But, yeah, are we jumping high numbers? No. Morale is something that was brought up, just concern of overall morale with competing with stronger schools, larger schools. We need to level the playing field, maintaining coaching staff is a concern. One item that was brought up a few times was best for students, making a decision which is best for students. And I do feel that our board does always consider what is best for students. It might not always come out, boats might not always come out the way that every person likes them, but I do think our board takes that very seriously. So, if you feel that we aren't invested in what's best for students, I'm sorry, but I think every person at this board table does make that a priority. Longevity, one thing I know, I had a conversation with somebody, and the landscape has changed in the Sulan Conference, and especially with new schools coming in, large schools coming in. That is very concerning to myself in knowing how we're going to go about competing with them if we were to stay in. Other things, wanting to win, wins are always great, great for morale, they just feel good, okay? Yeah, I can remember being on a losing softball team in high school, it wasn't much fun. And it does get old, but, yeah, you do keep going, you do keep going. Starting, one thing too, that I was glad that was brought up tonight. So, Josh, I was listening and you did get the full three minutes, was a systemic problem, and I'm glad that you brought that up. I think it is important we start young enough. I know our wrestlers start very young, and sometimes the mays run them up here. Seeing these little types running in their singlets and getting all excited about wrestling, it's really a cool thing to see. But we do have to, as a community, a school, our board, our district as a whole, we need to come together and talk about how we are going to help to grow. Because, yes, is the War Eagle a much better fit for us, which is brought up? Yeah, they are, they are more, schools that are more our size, there is competition there. But we do need to, we need to embrace that concept of let's work together. It is exciting to sit in the stands and see the stands go crazy, whether it's in football, or at a wrestling meet, or track meet, or wherever. I'm just seeing here, what else I had jotted down from emails and conversations. Would moving to the War Eagle be a solution to the issues that we are dealing with here at SO? No, it isn't a solution, but it is something that if we were to move, if the vote does pass to move, that we have to deal with and we have to address. So, keeping that in mind, I would say we have students who are very committed here. It's great to see, I mean, in the offseason, I love it when I go to the track and walk, and I see track kids out there practicing handoffs in the middle of summer. It's cool to see that commitment and running and early mornings, so that's cool. Keep it up. I think that's all of my notes. I hope I covered everything that was sent to me, I kind of, like I said to Stan. Not enough hours in the day sometimes, so. Anybody else want to share anything as far as board members?
I just want to say that when we go over before every meeting, the five school board basics, the first one is to put students first. So I think we all need to think about that when we make this vote. A lot of them came, a lot of them unspoke. They're all saying that War Eagle is where we need to go. So I think we need to consider that, put our own individual bias aside and make the right choice. And then the fourth one is to base decisions on shared objectives, which everybody came and shared their piece. I've heard from multiple people in the community via text message, email, phone call, grabbing me at a basketball game. So I think that everybody I've heard from is saying go to War Eagle. But they've also told me that just because we go there does not mean we're going to win every game. It's just, we don't have the depth to pull from, like MOC, Unity, and all them. We don't have, for instance, my Tate Marco, they have like five to seven of him, we have one of him. Ben Byers, they have like five to seven of him for like the basketball team, we have one. Losing one student, like Ben said, hurts, or one athlete hurts a program. And I also think that strength and conditioning, I know we have had that boy, that position still hanging there. I think we really need to go after that. I really think we need people to apply, and if there is applicants, we really need to look deep into them. Maybe they're not the applicant that we want, but we really need to dig and bring something in to help that program because these kids need that program. There's coaches, there's parents that are in there trying to help them in their off time, and I know they're really busy too. We also need to utilize our gyms. There's other schools that are utilizing their gyms for all kinds of things, whether it's a high school gym, the middle school gym, the elementary gym. I just want us to be able to utilize the gyms for these students. My vote is to go to War Eagle. I'm standing behind all of these students, my former athlete and my former student that graduated here, my current one that's in high school, and then my third grader that's coming up. The numbers are not there to stay in the Sulan Conference.
Any other questions I can answer or anything? Not to throw someone under the table, but Mrs. Elser can answer some as well. She was willing to come up if we had some specific questions for her.
No, just ask Mrs. Elser if you had anything specific that you would like to share with the board.
I guess, when I sit here and I listen to these kids, I don't know about some of you, but it chokes me up. I mean, we all have the pride and we're invested in our kids. How can we sit here and listen to how our kids are feeling? When I hear these little kids are looking up, what are they looking up to? Us as adults need to provide, are we setting our athletes up for success? Are we truly setting our athletes up for success? We talked about systemic approach, we talked about comparing apples to apples. Our district's not where it's been. We talk about the challenges of students, we need to talk about the challenges as coaching staff. Okay, we put our families aside as well to take care of all your children. To know that we're going to put in time, and then night in, night out, they all said it. You leave your heart on the floor and you're just deflated. So, when I look at benches, and I am not speaking on a specific sport, I am speaking on my whole student athletic personnel. I'm not going to lie, it scares me what we will do if we don't try something different. This is not the solution, I get it. But at least we can say we tried, we looked elsewhere and see, let's dig our hands in, and what is it that we do need to do? Because now we have made that leap. It's not a step, it's a leap, I get it. I'm happy where I'm at too. I love the Sulan babies. I love the relationships I have, but I'm putting them aside and doing what's best for our kids. This isn't about me. So, I'm also here to seek change. And I am thankful for those students, parents, coaches that have come forth and expressed their concerns to you as well. Because they can tell me as much as they want, we are all in this together. So, thank you for giving me a chance. I'm here to answer any specifics. I don't have all the answers, but I'm willing to provide what I can.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Amy or any comments that you want to bring forth or make?
I wasn't going to say this, but I will add, probably the two people that have talked about this the most, where it started is Amy and myself. And I can say confidently that when we started this, this had nothing to do with any specific sport, because I got that brought up. That was never on the table. It was what Amy, Mrs. Elser, excuse me, just said in terms of looking overall at our programs. I also got brought up that when we did this, we said we would revisit this. That was my own words last year. If that's the hangup, then put that on me. That's my problem, hold me accountable. I did say that, but the things have changed, facts have changed, we didn't know what would happen with the conference. So if that's going to be our hangup, then put that on me. But we're in a lot different place than where we were a year ago with the conference. But I will say, because I've had this brought up, I don't think at one time when we were meeting ever did it come down to one specific sport or one specific place. It was an overall program that led to these discussions.
I do think it's very, very important that we get this strength and conditioning coach situation figured out. It's just been hanging there, and it's been up and down for a very, very long time. And I think that's important for our athletes. And also giving that availability to our youth to utilize the gyms that we have, because they're not getting that, and that's very important to the growth of our youth.
And I don't think it's fair, I mean, we need to have a discussion as the board, and we have to look at our finances to see how we can support that type of position, but it's not fair to put that on our coaches, to be there as their strength and conditioning coaches.
Or even the parents, like, sometimes the parents are like, hey, did you go to the gym this morning? Are you going to the gym today? How many times have you been there for agility or lifting? Like, some kids are really good, they do it on their own, but there's other kids that don't, so some parents need to say that.
So, if you don't mind, on that strength and conditioning, I don't know how far back you guys go, but I was blessed three years ago to have admin come to me and ask to put that on the supplemental salary scale, because it wasn't there.
Okay.
They tried that position years ago, there was no buy-in from coaches, there was no buy-in from kids, so that, they just removed it.
Okay.
So we are blessed, three years ago, two or three, three or four maybe, that they put that back on. So yes, I agree, but you also have to buy in when you put that in. We offered programs and kids didn't think it was productive, so they didn't follow it. But I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't know where that comes in as far as deciding what conference we want to be in, as far as choosing a strength and conditioning coach, but...
I don't know if so much comes in with conference talk, it just comes in with, I know there's a lot of other schools that have a lot of good weightlifting programs, agility programs for the students before or after school, so that those athletes are in there building those muscles, getting stronger, getting better agility work done. And you need that for all sports around, wrestling, basketball, volleyball, track, all of it.
And injury prevention.
Right, you just need that, you need to be maintained.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't just open the doors and have unsupervised, you know? But, yeah, making our facilities as available as we can.
With some sort of supervision, I mean, they all are high school kids also. Like, we can't baby them for the rest of their life, they're going to go to cop, I mean, half of them get up, go to work, go to school, do their own thing. They're learning their own responsibilities, we can't constantly baby them.
Are there any other comments from any of the board members as far as the consideration to move to War Eagle? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to apply for entrance into the War Eagle Conference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that is passed. We will move back up in our agenda to our consent to items. Do you look over? Kendra did give us some more bills to look over.
We had a few more this time, just because it's an early meeting, early in the month. Friday was anyway that we posted. Some of the larger ones were open enrollment billings, special ed billings for first semester, that type of thing. Nothing out of the ordinary, I don't know.
With that, I'll ask for, oh, go ahead.
I will point out our, I know it's on your consent, but our resignations. I thank, I thank those for their service to our district over the last few years. Very appreciative of that. Sorry.
No.
I wiped out an accident, but...
No. Yep, Ally Mike.
Ally Mike, okay, yes.
With that, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
And Ally's just, she's not quitting there because she's teaching.
Her resignation's just for head volleyball.
Make a motion to approve consent items.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Onto your principals' reports.
So, I'm going to kind of give the better-looking Mr. DeZale's report, maybe. He's sick and not here right now. He said he was going to stick it out, and I said no, go, so he went, he went home. The biggest thing in there that he was going to talk about is if you look at the FAST screening data, and I won't pull it up, but just... screening data, and I won't pull it up, but just to summarize what he said. Um, they were a little disappointed in the results overall. Um, doesn't mean they're not gonna dig in and do the work, but probably a little, little lower than what they had hoped it would be or their goal was. He said the math, which is, they were more concerned about going into it, looked pretty good. Um, but doesn't mean though they won't dig into that, they did test that differently this time and I'm, and he's not saying that that's the cause, they're gonna look at that. They did some pull-out things in differently and maybe that affected it, maybe not, but that was the one thing he was gonna point out that, um, and it doesn't mean that there's alarm bells going off or anything, but it's just when you set high goals and if we don't quite get there, we gotta look at why we didn't. And so, that was the, the one thing he was gonna mention that I brought up there.
Alright, and we'll go on to Mr. Hertz.
Good stuff there, here for D cap.
Yeah. Uh, so I've got a couple of things I'll present tonight. Uh, my board report, typical, but then there's a district career and academic plan presentation I have to present to the board too, so. Couple times. Uh, we have also finished up at the middle school and high school, the, um, testing for reading and math, and I would say, I'd echo what Kent put in his report. Not where we wanna be, I think we're kinda seeing a little bit of test fatigue out of kids. Um, we have kids who take five or six standardized tests throughout the year. And they just get sick of them, and I think that's a little bit of what we're seeing. Um, right now, for our E L students, we're going into ELBA testing, so they have an additional test if they're not an English language speaker. Um, so, it's just a lot of testing, I think sometimes we do see a slump mid-year, and I think that's some of that is that test fatigue. Kids just, personally can take a test. Um, in my report, speaking of tests, we're getting ready for high SASS testing, which will happen, uh, in April. That's our big test, we give once a year, math, science, and reading and English. Those are the scores that end up on our school performance profile, so those are, those are a big deal. Uh, working on schedules, uh, the high school registration handbook is pretty much ready to go. Triala will be, um, printing those, and then in the next few weeks, we'll be talking to students and having them look at what courses they may wanna take for next year. And eventually in March, we'll have kids actually signing up for classes, that's, that's a big undertaking, and we're, we're making good progress there. Some things I'd like the board to just think about and consider, um, and maybe an item at some point we could vote on or discuss. Um, compared to other schools in the Sulan Conference and just in our principals' group, we have about the lowest graduation requirement for credit number. We're at forty-six, school average was about forty-nine, with some schools in, up to like fifty-two credits. For perspective, if a kid took a class every single period, all four years, they could earn sixty-four credits. They have to take seven credits a semester for each semester, all four years, they can take one study hall, and they have to take seven classes. So, they're still gonna end up with way more, ten more credits than they would need to graduate, so it does leave that buffer and barrier, um, in there. So, our requirement's low, and there's a couple of things that I think, based on where we're at with our D cap district career and academic plan, it may be time to consider adding some additional credits in there. Some feedback I got from staff, concerns with success is there isn't really an incentive for students to complete the career exploration and future-ready curriculum that we've made for them, and the buy-in's pretty low. So, one thing that's been proposed is to offer a half credit for that success class. And make it a pass fail, so students earn credit for doing the work in that class. So, that's, you know, over four years, a half credit, a year that equal two credits total, so not a huge impact, but other schools do, do that, offer a credit for that success class. So, then there is some accountability, if a kid chooses not to do any of those requirements, then they could lose that credit potentially. Another thing we're looking at is, um, our careers class, which we piloted this year, and we're making it a, uh, prerequisite for school to career. Um, right now, anyone can take it nine through twelve, we're looking at possibly making it a requirement for freshmen or sophomore. The purpose of the class is for students to dive into what careers they may be interested in, have an opportunity to do research and learn more about those careers. Hopefully in the future, guest speakers or maybe college campus visits, things like that. What we're finding is a lot of our kids don't have a plan for what they wanna do after high school, and that really sets them back. Some do, many do have a good plan, but I think they maybe haven't explored all the options that they could. Freshman year's a good year to do that, or sophomore year, because of health, health is a one semester class. Then there's nothing to balance that out on the other semester, so kinda looking at it being freshman or sophomore year, that helps balance their schedules out a little bit too. So, if we did make that a required class, then that would increase the credit one more, so if you did. And again, this is something we can think about and then we can talk more about it, but two credits for success and an additional credit for careers, that would move us from forty-six to forty-nine, which is a little more in line with what the average is. We were the lowest when principals responded for, for credit requirements. Unless they do something unique like half credits and their requirement is twenty-five. If that makes sense, so it's not that they require twenty-five credits, it's that their English class, that we give one credit for, they give a half a credit.
So, it's like fifty?
So, it's like our fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we're, we're a little lower there, it's okay that our requirement's a little lower, but these are things that I think are important opportunities for kids. And we can require them and then change our requirements for graduation too, so. Something to think about, I'll maybe talk with Stan and Laurel, if there's questions, definitely ask, and we can look at, at another board meeting, maybe considering that, so. Um, professional development, we continue to work on M T S S and our individual, uh, teacher professional development plan goals, they're making progress there. We just had a D cap district career and academic plan meeting this afternoon with teachers to help, uh, develop our plan a little bit further. Uh, but with such a short turnaround from the last board meeting, not a ton of other thing, ton of other things going on, so. My staff attendance and the professional development attendance is at the bottom there. Questions about any of that, kind of a lot of information?
I do wanna add, Mr. Hertz is going above and beyond here because he's technically out on paternity leave. While giving home a, a new child.
Congratulations.
Felt compelled to come.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, I have to do the district career and academic plan presentation, that has to happen, so. So, I'm here.
Yeah, congrats, and he didn't have to be, but he is here.
Is the picture gonna be a part of your portfolio?
It's not.
Okay.
Now, that maybe would've been a good idea.
Future generals, you know.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. DeZale.
Um, yes, what I have on here talking about different goals, I won't read every item on here, and as Mr. Hertz was talking about the career and things, I realized one of the things that I was gonna put on here and I didn't. Um, that we're talk, when we're talking about retention and engagement and things like that. Um, I've mentioned that we had our site visit for the food nutrition program, and as a result of that, um, I've done the follow-through, um, I wasn't able to be there, but we had a wellness policy meet, or, uh, group meeting the other day to go over that. But one of the things they've been working on with the hospital is, um, Brantah Harrell out the hospital is using a student from here through their CAPS program, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, but it's Dawson Byer, if anyone knows who that is. But working on a, an idea for a, a wellness challenge between like students and staff, and the hospital's gonna help out with that and so forth, so.
Right up his alley.
Huh?
Right up his alley.
Right up his alley, yes. Um, and so forth, so, not that I've done the work, they're doing that, but they are working on that, but that's something that we've been talking about on and on with them and so forth, and I just think that'd be a a, a fun way to do, we're required to have a wellness policy, which we do in place and do different things, but kind of a different approach and teaming up with the hospital a little bit more on that for some ideas. And then, when we were talking through that, Brantah contacted me, she said, there's a student, and I first didn't know who she was talking about, and that ended up being Dawson, that is doing that is one of the projects for his, I don't even know if you knew that or not, but one of the projects for his CAPS.
He's done so many all the time, though.
Right, well, I found similar things out, and then your own kids don't tell you what they're doing, that happens often. But, um, that's one of the things they're working on, they're trying to figure out an app that we can maybe get for free. There's a lot of options to pay for, but to do, and then, yeah, the, I, I don't know all the details, but I thought that was a pretty cool thing and something that we're trying to work on engagement-wise. Um, other than that, I won't read through everything, and some of the stuff that we'll talk about, I have in other parts, but, um, a lot of time being spent on financial things, I'll just summarize that, right now with different projections and budgets and models and things like that, that Kendra spent a lot of time on as well, so.
Okay, we'll move on to, um, board committees did not meet, so we'll jump right down to recognition of excellence.
Alright, and our student council member couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna read for them. Uh, last week was National School Counselor Week, so thank you to our school counselors, Mrs. Colling, Mrs. Jensen, Mrs. Ruggles, for all that they do to support our students' academic and social behavioral needs. They do a lot, and their job is tough, they see a lot of the difficult things our students struggle with, and that can be a lot of weight to carry. Uh, Sulan Conference Wrestling Recognition, Kane Julius, conference champion, Sulan All-Conference First Team. Dawson Byer, conference champion, Sulan All-Conference First Team. Easton Byer, conference champ, Sulan Conference, uh, All-Conference First Team. Aiden Byer, Sulan All-Conference Second Team. Uh, the following wrestlers qualify for state tournament. Lily Marco, Lily competed at girls' state wrestling tournament in Coralville on February sixth. Congratulations to Lily. Um, FFA Sub-District Convention, Ben Byers, Tyler Marco, Jackson Pedley, Sienna Van Houten had their Iowa degrees approved and will all receive their Iowa degrees at state convention. Katie, Katie Kruger is on the ballot for the Northwest District FFA Treasurer. She will make a speech and answer questions, uh, for the delegates at the district convention on March eighth, where voting will take place. Uh, January General of the Week, January tenth for elementary, Christian Manzon. Middle school, Byron Olivera. High school, Xander Miller and Hannah Prins. Staff, Kater Hytler. On the seventeenth, uh, for elementary, Remy Herrera. Middle school, Gage White. High school, Cody Rudd. Staff, Chrissy Ackerman. And January twenty-fourth, uh, Ellie Lorts, Eli Lorts. For middle school, Tyson Hager. High school, Kaylee Woolmack. And staff, Des Scott.
We weren't in school the first week, so that's why there's no generals for the first week.
Okay. Moving on to our discussion items, literacy goal presentation from the elementary.
So, the timing and other commitments to, tonight, they couldn't be here, there's some other church things going on.
Yep.
But I already had this on the agenda, so, um, they were just gonna, what, Mrs. Nag on here, just kinda summarize what they're doing K six literacy-wise, and obviously, hopefully, if you remember, we've talked about, or you should at least hopefully sound familiar, Amplify or C K L A, and that word in the third year, that. Um, I will add, they didn't say this, with some of the different legislation going on to the state level with the science of reading and, and so forth. I'm glad we're on this, cause it's an approved curriculum, um, and we would've had to switch anyway, now that we're three years into this, so I am thankful for that. So, they just, she had some comments on that, and they're gonna talk in person at a different month, we're gonna shift some things around. Um, and then, they had just some different additional things that they're doing at each grade level, and obviously, that looks different for kindergarten. You know, where they're exposing students to different trade books, right, and they're just learning to read versus what they're doing for literacy in fifth and sixth grade. Where they're also doing a book club and reading extra books every Tuesday and Thursday during success or after school at different times and, and and making presentations on that, obviously, that looks different by grade level, but they were gonna talk about some different things that they're doing at each level, so. Um, that's their report for now, and they'll talk later at a different month.
Um, two-minute board policy moment.
So, the, the first one, just as a question that I got asked a couple of times here, so I thought it would be appropriate to bring up, is there a policy on the agenda? And so forth, so without reading the whole thing, in short, that it's the board president slash Laurel's role in consultation with myself to set the agenda, um, and so forth, that's who sets it month to month. Um, I know some schools where they're, they'll meet often to do that. Laurel and I have generally rolled it over, and then I ask if she has any questions, and doesn't mean we meet in person every time, but usually we communicate, right? And so forth, yeah. Um, the, the fourth paragraph, the board will take action on items listed on the tentative agenda with public notice. Items added to the agenda may be discussed or taken in advisement of the board, and so forth, that is not the paragraph I wanted to read, I apologize. Third paragraph. Um, no, I wanna read the one where it talks about adding items here now, and I lost my spot here, but basically, it talks about if board members wish to add something that we didn't. What, one is it?
Second one to the bottom.
Yeah, it's one of your.
Was I on the right one?
I got myself flustered, obviously, here. Um, if they wanna add to it, it, it could be if it was voted on, I don't know many times that that would come into play, but that would come into play, that someone's requested it and Laurel and I say no, and they still want it on the agenda, but in short, that is the way the agenda's set, so. And then, for the finance, so, we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, and we have to approve some things for our budget and, uh, the dates and some of the different rates here, but one of the things in setting our budget that I wanted to go over is just a term that we'll be talking about in the next month, but the budget guarantee. And just a brief description on that, so, the biggest thing that goes into finance, and we've talked about the S S A, which the increase in the, um, dollars we get per pupil is the easy way to put that. And how many pupils we have, cause we always say our funding is pupil or enrollment-driven. So, our reg- regular program, the term is regular program district cost, is your district cost per pupil. Um, synonymous with the state cost per pupil, right now ours is equal, except by the Iowa State Legislature, so we don't set that. And then you multiply that by your certified enrollment from last fall, so the enrollment we had last fall in October of twenty twenty-four will be what our numbers are based on for F Y twenty-six, it gets confusing with all these years here. And so, I'm using, increasing by three percent on the high end here next year, what that could potentially look like here, so if you take last year numbers times three percent, that'd be eight thousand sixty-one dollars per student times six hundred and sixty-nine point three, that was our certified enrollment. So, our regular program district cost, five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and, five thousand, five million three hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Not that you have to memorize that, but just to show here, okay, for the year before, what was set was seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six, and you can see we have less students. And so, obviously, that comes to five million seventy-seven thousand dollars and change. So, where this comes into play, so last year, we talked about being on the budget guarantee. All that means is you are guaranteed to get a hundred and one percent of your regular program district cost from the year before. So, I didn't even show from F Y twenty-four the budget, if we were on the budget guarantee or not, cause we were. But our regular program district cost from F Y twenty-four was that five million two hundred and sixty thousand. You can see last year, our number because of the enrollment going down, which is this year's budget, that number was less than that, right? So, then we have to approve what's called the budget guarantee, cause you take, show here, you take your previous year's regular program district cost, and the next year, your, your, the budget guarantee is you get a hundred and one percent of that. Well, our funding times the enrollment wasn't equal to that. If we take this five thou, five million two hundred and sixty thousand and change, times a hundred and one percent, our budget guarantee amount for this year was five million three hundred thirteen thousand one twenty. So, to get that, we needed two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and, two hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and eleven dollars, that, that got us there. So, that was part of our budget, we approved that, that's called the guarantee. The issue with that is, that comes and that's all a hundred percent straight property tax, right? Okay, so this is why that's important, for this year, with enrollment up and hopefully a positive S S A, you can see last year, I put that over there on the right, but we're only guaranteed to get a hundred and one percent of that top number. That's why the budget guarantee is a long year, just gives, with enrollment declines, gives you some funding to get through the current year to make those decisions. We're only guaranteed a hundred and one percent of this number. Well, just because of our increase in enrollment and S S A, you can see we're, we're gonna be above that. So, we won't, as of right now, qualify for the budget guarantee, which is a great thing, and we'll talk about that later, but that's, we still will pass that resolution, and I'll talk about that later, you do that annually, but this year, we don't need to have that. Um, some years it could come from if you're right on the line or just. Um, some years it could come from if you're right on the line or just a student or two down and you have enough increase in that SSA amount that we get from the state. Or just an increase in student, um, enrollment are the two things to drive that, but that's why we won't have it this year. Remember, that's a hundred percent property tax, like I said, so that's why enrollment increases and SSA increases are really important. And those are things none of us here have control over. How we move forward and the decisions we make have an impact, but none of us here can vote on and set what our student enrollment is. It is what it is and none of us can control what SSA is, we're told that by the state, but that's why those have such a huge pack, impact on our budget.
We'll be on to the de cap report.
All right, so yeah, either one, the PDF or the presentation is, either one of those is fine, yeah. So a little background, um, this is just my report to you, the board members of our district career and academic plan, that's what de cap stands for. Um, last year I presented, um, just as part of my principal. If you can remember that, I just talked a little bit about our de cap plan within my principal report. The feedback we got from the state is they actually want it to be a separate agenda item and they wanna see an actual, like, presentation. So, that's what we're doing. Um, so again, stands for district career and academic plan, it has seven sections, so by the end of this, our plan will probably be about fifty pages, I would guess, somewhere between forty and fifty pages long. Um, and that's something primarily our high school counselor and myself, instructional coach, with the, you know, contribution of lots of other people here and there, put together. Um, essentially, it's our way of demonstrating to the state that we're meeting the needs of our students in college preparation, career preparation, future-ready skills, all of those things that they want us to have, so, there's seven components to the rubric. Your team members, so who's on the de cap team, you have to have a summary statement, your course planning, work-based learning, um, the essential components of the ICAP, which stands for Individual Career and Academic Plan, FAFSA advisement and district integration, so how are all of these things connected and integrated throughout the district? And to break down the five essential components of the ICAP, that's self-understanding, career information, career exploration and experiences, post-secondary exploration and career and post-secondary decision. So those are the five components of that one piece of the seven, so. Team members, there's a lot of people involved, I would say primarily the people that work on it, myself, counselor, instructional coach, um, Jordan Manning, who we're kinda sharing with the, uh, AEA and some other districts, has been helping out with it quite a bit. And then we do have a de cap team that is, you know, teachers primarily, but we do get feedback, you know, presenting to you, the board members, and we've had some discussions about success and some other things that we do. I do talk to, you know, people in the community about these things, just to kinda see what things they're looking for, how we can better meet the needs of our students in school to career, different things that we offer. Um, we're partnered with North O'Brian Community College, they're a part of this as well in a, you know, advisory type role. Students love to get their feedback, I was able to sub in a success today where we were doing future-ready and just, you know, like to hear from them, is this valuable? Do you see yourself using this, you know? The response I got was, eh, it's not so bad, so, not overly positive, but I think honest, which is good, so. And we do have other agencies that are involved, vocational rehab, where it's for students who have like disabilities, diagnosed disabilities, helps them get work training while they're in school, helps them with resumes and applications and then helps them get placed in a career field, so we do have services that our students have, um, access to and those are all great things, so. Just an overview of how we scored last year, so on the rubric that they graded us on, and it is linked there if you wanna go in and click and look at the rubric. We got a thirteen out of thirty-six, which means we, you know, we have a lot of work to do. Um, and that's kind of across the board, we were in the one-ish range, most of the areas in the rubric are on a scale up to three, um, so just definitely room to improve. I will say, when we go to the trainings at the AEA and other districts are there, there are quite a few other schools in the same boat as us, kinda in that low to mid-teens, a few districts did, uh, score pretty well in the mid twenties. Uh, MMCRU was one, so I've talked with their principal quite a bit. I have a copy of their plan, just so I can kinda see what they're doing differently than us. Um, they made a lot of the same changes we made this year, they went to a, a required success, they call it something different. And as part of that time, they are doing this, these things, future-ready, college and career planning. Um, just 'cause it's hard to integrate that into the classroom, so that all students get that opportunity, so.
Did they have the highest de cap score in the area?
Of the teams that went to the AEA training, uh, MMCRU and South O'Brien had the two highest scores. That, that is a competition, but it does bother me a little bit that we're. We need to score higher, so we're making changes to make sure we do that. Um, so part of this, one change we gotta make, presenting to the school board, so this, that's an area on the rubric, if you take a look at it, that we didn't perform well because they didn't like that it wasn't a separate agenda item, they didn't like that it wasn't a presentation. So we're gonna, right there, we're gonna get a couple of points back that we missed last year. Um, four-year planning, work-based learning experiences, um, the ICAP, self-reflection and career information, the post-secondary exploration, and then how the district plan and the individual plans for students, how those are integrated. Those are all areas on the rubric that we need to improve at. We're gonna go to the next one, so just an overview, we added success this year. Um, and I'm thinking that will go a long way in meeting a lot of those, um, areas of need, especially the self-understanding, the career information, the post-secondary exploration, that's all things we're doing in success, kids are taking interest surveys. They're, right now, they're finishing up the U-Scienc brain games, um, that's something that the state likes to see us do, it engages students aptitudes in different career fields and then connects them with those fields, and then we're giving them time to research that and explore more if that's something they're interested and they wanna go into, so. Feel good about those changes that we've made, I think it's giving our students a lot more opportunities. Definitely, we still have a lot of work to do in that area, there's a, a lot of things that we can do to, to continue to improve that. We're utilizing U-Scienc quite a bit more than we were last year, that's a platform that basically takes what we need to do for ICAP and puts it under one, one URL, one website. So kids get their surveys there, they get their college and career readiness, they get to do their four-year planning, they can upload, um, resumes. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for all of those things, um, a- and it's something we were already paying for, we just weren't utilizing at every grade level, so, we're, we're getting a little more bang for our buck now.
So what grade level do you start though, U-Scienc and?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Yeah, you're probably.
Yeah, gonna be teaching that in another week.
Yeah, you're like speaking my language here, yeah, you're living it. So, yeah, great, happy with the U-Scienc progress we're making, we did have a FAFSA advisement grant, it wasn't overly utilized, but we did have a, a grant we applied for last year, we had a, um, a gal from NCC that would come into the building and students or parents could sign up for times to meet with that person to go over FAFSA and just learn how to apply and ask any questions, and then Mrs. Ruggles did present about FAFSA at the school board, or, uh, conference night on Monday, so, that FAFSA advisement is happening. Um, work-based learning, I think this is a strength of ours, we have a really strong school-to-career program. When I talk to other schools about how many kids we have, how much of the day we allow them to leave the building and the opportunities that they get, a lot are pretty blown away that a small school can offer that. So I think that's something we're doing really well and that program continues to grow and, and be more popular and kids really look forward to that experience, so.
Can I add one thing to that? I think we did, the work-based learning stuff gets scored in a couple of different metrics and we did score well on those. And I think that comes down to simply how it was coded as a class, so we have changed that this year, it won't be reflected till next year. We didn't really have to do anything different other than, I, I know that seems silly, but how it was coded as a class. The easiest way to explain it would be, you teach an algebra class that got coded as Algebra A and we didn't get credit for it and so you recode it as Algebra One or something like that. That, you're still teaching the same content, but the state wanted that coded differently.
So we had it coded as a career exploration. The state decided last year that only about five different things count towards, you know, school-to-career, work-based learning, that category. So now it's coded as internship, which does meet the state requirement. We didn't change anything about school-to-career, just what it's coded as, so, yes, it was a career exploration and it was fine that we had it coded in that way, but, yeah, now that the state has changed their requirement, we just have to change what we coded as to meet, meet what they're asking for, so, yeah. Um, so again, a strength of ours and that's great, and then just looking to increase opportunities for integration. Having a strong individual plan for students leads to a strong district plan. Um, just an overview, and I've linked in some documents if you wanna dive into those a little bit, but, you know, success is allowing us to meet those ICAP requirements. U-Scienc again, for the ICAP, um, I'm on the next slide if you wanna go. Careers, that's an elective class that we've added this past year. And I talked to my board report about potentially in the future, making that a required class, and that helps strengthen our de cap because then all students get that opportunity to do these things that the state wants us to do. Obviously, school-to-career, we wanna continue to grow that and look for partnerships with community businesses to take kids on and, and train them on the job. Something that we've talked up quite a bit about recently is this idea of what's called a portrait of a graduate, so other districts are doing this. Um, basically, they're creating a portfolio for each student, um, that over four years, they continue to add in their interest surveys and their college explorations, explorations and their reflections on those things, all onto one portfolio. So then that can go with the student when they leave here, um, that's something we're considering. I really like Sue Center's model, um, they have a Google site that kids create and then they add throughout their four years to that Google site. And then by the time they're done, they have a whole website that has, you know, all of their college visits, all of their resumes, all of their surveys that they completed, all the things the ICAP requires, their four-year plan, their college plan, if they go to college. It has all that and they can take that website with them when they're done. So I don't know if we're ready to jump into that, but that's a conversation we're having and, and other districts are doing that with success, so.
Okay.
Now, yeah, but.
Do you see that being a part of the success class or not?
Yeah, I think it will probably need to be, will probably need a place for students to have time to upload the things that they do or write their reflections and, um, it's tough to put that even within a required English class, because not everybody takes that, we have special ed students that maybe won't take that. We have EL students that maybe won't take that, so, success is a class that everybody takes. Um, and if we provide credit for it, then there's some accountability there too. Yep. Um, and then we gotta increase integration, so trying to connect all of these things that we offer. That was a, a part of the rubric that we need to continue to work on, if you wanna switch to the next slide. I did include some data, um, that the AEA put together for us, so just our, um, like, college, post-secondary participation, it's a little small. Um, but you can see the red line on top is the number of students who enroll in college or plan to enroll in college following high school, then the triangles would be, they persisted, or they did enroll within one year. The squares would be pers- uh, persisted for at least into their second year of college. And then the plus is completed within six years, so, our interest in going to college is at that sixty to seventy, eighty percent, some grade levels, it fluctuates. And then our persistence is, you know, quite a bit lower than that, so we have kids that are, wanna go to college, thinking about going to college, but they end up not following through, we'd like to see those bottom lines creep up closer, that the majority of students who choose to go to college persist through, I think some of that is, we haven't planned enough with kids while they're here for them to leave here and know, this is the college I wanna go to, this is the program I wanna enter. Now, kids, of course, will change their mind, that happens, um, but I think the more we can prepare them, the greater the persistence will be. So that's why I included that data on there. Um, yeah, and there's quite a bit, chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, there's a lot of things that are considered in the de cap. Um, but I think the data's telling us this, these are good things to focus on and improve in, so. Next steps, we'll continue to work on new innovations for success, uh, for our careers class, for U-Scienc, for school-to-career, we're gonna continue to grow those. We wanna continue to build our ICAP plan for our students, that may someday look like a online portfolio. Um, we wanna continue to grow our team, so if you or there are community members that you know of that would be really interested in being a part of this, we'd love to have them come to your meeting or be a school-to-career host, things like that. Wanna increase our post-secondary and work-based learning opportunities and continue to utilize data to make good decisions for our kids. Any questions about, that's kind of an overview, um.
Is this relatively new, this de cap?
It's a good question, so, I think this is the third or fourth year the state has required that we submit a plan.
And I wa- I wanna say it's the third year that they, that they rebranded it as de cap. I think we had a plan with.
Decap at all, I don't ever, you're talking about de cap.
Correct, because we didn't have to present, we just had to submit it.
And there, so, they've been doing it, I think, for three years and the feedback we got at the meeting where we got the thirteen scores, they said, it's been, it's been this way for three years and all three of the years, they have changed the rubric, what they're grading you on and what you submit, they've changed that every year, the state has. So, you know, their words were, it's kind of a moving target for districts, we make some changes, then they change the rubric. Then we make some changes, they change the rubric again, so thi- this would be an example, they did not require this previously, now they are requiring this. And we, you know, scored poorly in that category.
So you will be in charge of this, though?
Yep, so myself and our high school counselor, Teresa Ruggles, so we go to the AEA trainings to get the feedback, to meet with other districts, see what they're doing, then we work with the de cap team here to make changes, implement those changes and then update our plan, we'll go back in March to do a plan review with other schools and the AEA, make some final tweaks, and it has to be submitted the first week of April.
I'd say the biggest thing that's changed is the additional focus on careers that aren't necessarily tied, trying to encompass this all, tied to a class, like, a lot of it's focused on what you did in your CTE, so like your FCS and Ag and industrial tech and business and then other things like that, but like some of the things he's talking about that they're doing during success time is the biggest change that they've thrown in the last few years that, hey, this is coming and now they're making it like, you're gonna get scored and eventually like required to do something with that.
Yep, and Stan and I have talked, I mean, kind of the direction it looks like the state is heading is that eventually this may be part of our performance profile score. It's kinda what they're leaning towards or what it looks like, so this year is the first year, the performance profile score for high school included, um, work-based learning experiences, that's the first time they've ever done that. And I think they're just kinda heading in that direction and want schools to be focusing more on college and career readiness, which I agree with, I think that's a good thing to focus on, so. We want our kids to be ready for what's next.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz and Federal.
Thank you, Deidre.
Gus Rock?
Yeah, well, coincidentally, and I apologize for my phone, but this is appropriate on the next one, it was going off because the superintendents are blowing up about what's happening with weather. And schooling tomorrow, so, I think, and you talked at the right time it went off, but.
We've been touching it a billionth time, we don't even know what's going on.
Yeah, that's why I was like, oh, okay, that's why I was like, I'm like, I didn't realize people are talking about that right now, so, I guess if you're watching YouTube, you'll win some. Not promising, we can, um. Just, I wanted this on there, on the agenda and talking about it a little more specifics, nothing that we're specifically talking about. Um, I know this got asked the last time I brought it up, and so, um, I haven't even talked with Kendra about this, but looking at doing the math here, it, it comes to just about a little over, I think it's twenty grand for someone to drive the bus each day, one of the ru- the, um, routes when you go, it's like we approved last spring, fifty-four dollars twice a day, times one eighty, that's twenty grand without the additional ICA, I- I-PERS and FICA and all that stuff, in addition to fuel and things, so when we're talking that, my guesstimate is that twenty-five to thirty range, that would be a savings per year on a bus route, something like that, without factoring in busing costs, but. on a bus route, something like that, without factoring in busing costs, but I know we talked about that last time, what type of costs are in there, so that's something Amos and I are still discussing. Um, and obviously, if that happens, we'll bring that to you, but we want that out there, public being aware, because that could change. You know, if we go to six routes, that's great, picking up what, who we're required to pick up, but then the ones that were not required to pick up, like the town stops, that could definitely affect that due to riding time and things like that, so I just want that out there and people to still be aware.
So removing one stop saves.
Removing one route.
One route.
Sorry, not if I said stop, I misspoke, I meant one route, we have seven rural bus routes, and if we would go down to six. That would be the savings, does that make sense?
It's a little bit more than that, cause there's FICA and ICA.
Right, I didn't factor FICA, I present, but roughly, just from the salary that would be, without factoring in the other costs.
Cause during, uh, COVID or these forgot the name of those dollars.
Oh, S, yeah, S R, yes.
S R, I mean, that's why we added a route, correct, I think.
I believe so, yes. Yes, it wasn't part of the discussion, but I'm not criticizing, but I think that's why it got added, yes, right? And we've absorbed that since then, and that's been great. Yes.
And I've heard a lot of positive, like the, the secondary route that goes to achieving, if, there's a lot of kids, you probably see that drag that get on there.
And that doesn't mean that's the route.
Right, but I think that was one of the routes that was put on because of the.
But that's been a very efficient route, because that used to be picked up with a couple different rail routes. And just having some. They did, but it wasn't necessarily all at one location before, that was how I was explained, right? So that's one of the things, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna do that route anymore, it could be.
Been there in the morning, there's a lot of kids.
Yeah, it could be another route and we're just shifting who's on some of the other rail routes around to add to this bus, to this, you know what I mean?
We, we still have to provide transportation for most of them.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we would, we have to regardless, but I'm saying we wouldn't necessarily just say, oh, that town stops, we're, we're gonna do like before, that, that's not necessarily the case.
Same stops, they're just maybe squeezing it into another route, if I understand, right?
Yep.
So pick up drop-off times for some kids may be a little different.
Could be a little bit, correct, yep.
And you're not proposing cutting it right now, though?
Not right now, just discussing, it's one of the things we're talking about, yep.
Okay, so moving on to new business, we'll jump down to letter B. Uh, consider approval of operational sharing agreements.
So this is the operational sharing agreement, um, remind you, we get a additional students that goes in our certified enrollment, which we were talking about at the beginning, what we get funding for. Um, we get four students or F T Es, or four student F T Es for that. And so we share our transportation director with H L P, and they're interested in continuing to do that. And they pay for a portion of the transportation director's salary.
Is there a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve operational sharing agreement for the ta- transportation director with H L.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. That was passed. Human resources director?
Likewise, we do that with our, um, human resources position, and, and that's an additional stipend, so that salary is shared. We do that partially with Emmitsburg and H L P, and the, the remaining is here, um. H L, or excuse me, H R doesn't mean the same thing everywhere, some people assume that, a lot of what is used for is helping the other districts with some of their policies and so forth, and putting on their board agendas, things like that, and, and we do a lot of things like that with that position. Added things like background checks and do a lot of policy work and things like that, that's what that position does, that'd be Chrissy Ackerman's position.
And who was the transportation director?
Amos, yep.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the human resource director sharing with Emmitsburg H L P.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was passed.
And I, I should've said, the reason in the past it said names, but I didn't, because then it looks, if, if, no one's gonna leave, that's not what I'm hinting, but if someone leaves halfway through the year and we have an agreement with a name on, I change it to position.
Okay, set date for public hearings for certified budget.
So we need to have two public hearings for our certified budget. The first one, these dates are a little different than last year, cause of course the legislature's changed that. But the first one can't occur before the twentieth, so it has to be on the twentieth or later. The second one has to occur on or before April thirtieth. And, and then certified at our April board meeting, so these are the dates we're proposing. Um, the first one would be on Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five at five thirty P M, that's different than our March board meeting, that's not our March boarding meeting night, this is a separate night. Um, the second one would be on Wednesday, April twenty-third at five thirty, that is a Wednesday, but that, if you remember last month, we moved the April board meeting to that night, cause of conflicts, and so this would be the same night as our April board meeting. We can do that that night, we have the hearing at the beginning, and then we go and approve the budget during the meeting. That's really all I'll have to say.
Is there a motion for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the suggested dates and titles above, mention public hearing for civil achievement and certified budget.
Is there a second? A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to budget guarantee.
So this was what I was talking about earlier, but in order to do the budget guarantee, the board has to um, have an agenda item that is approved. It is recommended best practice, whether you have it or not, to approve that every year, because it doesn't cost you anything if you don't qualify, and if something happens that you're not predicting. You have that in the minutes, and then we have to send that on the department of management. I don't anticipate anything happening, but in theory, if we got negative T S S, or there's a huge reduction, you, we, we could all of a sudden have to qualify for that.
Think all the things would be set already.
So they are not yet, but.
Yeah, I was thinking budget, I was thinking numbers and.
So this, this one clear, the only re- the only way you have a budget guarantee is if you have less enrollment from the previous year, correct?
And you're.
So it's, it goes with, you, you could have the budget guarantee if you didn't have enough of an increase in the, the S S A amount, the amount per student, or if it went it doesn't happen often, but it's possible, if it went negative and we had like stable enrollment, you would actually have next dollars, or less dollars the next year, so then you would technically qualify. Yep. Ideally, that would not happen, but if you were close or a little bit behind, and they set S S A at zero percent.
Operational deals that would.
Yes, we could, yeah, if we didn't have enough, um, students through that means, or we lost some agreements, right, that they didn't continue, that could very well happen. And with the increase in other costs, and they set S S A at zero percent, there's been some years in the last fifteen that that's happened. Then you can all of a sudden have less funding, so then you need the budget guarantee.
I hope that doesn't happen.
Correct.
I move that it be resolved that the board of directors of civil achievement and community school district will levy property taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six of the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section two five seven point one four, Court of Iowa.
Is there a second? A second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Establish the percent of income surtax.
So as we are working on preparing the budget for you guys that will have at our hearing, we technically have to have that approved and uploaded and done by the end of the month, cause we have to have it submitted by the fourth, and then have the hearing on the twentieth, it has to be published in between time. One of the things that we need, um, approval from you guys is to setting the income surtax for both the voted pebble and for the instructional support levy, and so they're tied together here. We're proposing to leave the overall rate the same, so the amounts that would've come, but we're changing the amounts on, on one and the other. I'll try and explain this as succinctly as I can, we put it at five percent on both of them last year. We're recommending setting the income sa- income surtax rate at three percent for the voted pebble, which is this item. And then the next item, we would raise it from five to seven, so overall, you can see it's at, still at ten. The reason for that is, is there things you can borrow against voted pebble? Um, as long as it was provided through property taxes and not the income surtax, so we have a little more borrowing capacity, if we would need to do that in the future. And so that's the reason for that. Overall, the dollars amount, if we would set them at five, and five each, like we've done in, in the past year. The amounts we're proposing comes out exactly the same.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion to set the income surtax rate at three percent for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so explanation's the same here, except this one's up for the instructional support levy, up to seven percent.
Questions on that one? Okay, is there a motion?
Is it, is it the highest it could be, is seven?
No. Um, twenty. But.
Income surtax, though, is a tax on your tax.
Tax on your tax. So you can set it at twenty, but you might not be able to claim that, because you can't get more dollars through the income surtax than that you qualify for, for that particular levy, so if it generated more, then they would, they lower it.
Okay, is there a motion, if there's some more questions?
Make a motion to set the income surtax at seven percent of the instructional support levy for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. And that was passed, consider approval of fund transfer.
So we get income surtax revenue, what we just voted on for our voted pebble and the instructional support levy, and it comes, is it twice per year? Okay, and so it comes to the general fountain, then, general fund, and then we have to make a motion to transfer it to the pebble account. Um, due to timing and the dollars amount we got in the first one, the second payment was only for one thousand two hundred twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents, but we still have to have a agenda item and a motion to approve transferring that.
Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion approve, approve the fund transfer as presented.
Is there a second? A second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and that was passed. Approval of payments to SiteLogic.
Um, typical, like we presented the last several months and we pay a percentage of that, nothing's changed.
One question I got, is there, is it, I can't remember even what we're doing again, do we have a summary of
Oh, for the.
Done this, and I, I'm like, you know what? I'll wait, I'll wait, look back at my notes that I've written down, so.
Um.
Would there be a summary that you just, like, maybe whip out, it doesn't have to be tonight, or the next week, just so we.
Yeah, or even by Friday.
Next week's fine.
Okay.
Kinda see where we're at.
Right, check back, and what, what actually are the projects are, we are doing.
The proposed ones, the quick version is secure entrance at the high school and middle school, and at the elementary. The elementary one's more work, cause it's remodeling the classroom to be the office, and the office space would get put into like sped-ed classrooms. And then the fire alarm E M S system up here, and, um, middle school roof. That's what's proposed, whether that, we'll, we'll find out when bids come in, whether that can all come in.
There's some heating too, and cooling.
Oh, I didn't say, that's the biggest part. Yes, the H vac at the elementary. Sorry, that's not funny, but, yeah. I just meant, I left that out, yeah, the geothermal, replacing the H vac at the elementary.
Okay. I'll read those down, so I have it.
I can add that down.
Okay, is there, uh?
Huh? If I write it down, I see.
Is there a motion for, uh, the SiteLogic payments?
Some.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that was passed. We have no new contracts unless, unless you have surprise scores.
No, I don't.
Next meetings.
Um. So our regularly scheduled date in March is the seventeenth. That would be our March meeting, and then, like I said, the twentieth would be, assuming that was a- approved when I wrote this, that it would be, the hearing would be on the twentieth. April twenty-three is, I'm going from memory here, but I believe it's a Wednesday, I think the Monday is the twenty-first. But we're gonna have our meeting on Wednesday, and then we'd have hearing number two on that night. We will also, that night, I'll get more information as we get closer, but that's when they'll, assuming everything proceeds as normal, they'll do the revenue bond sale um, that afternoon, and then we present that that night, I'm not a hundred percent, obviously not being through that process, but I know Piper Sandler's here that afternoon, and then, or they'll be here remotely, excuse me, and then we present what we need to that night, so just as an F Y I. Um, and then the thirteenth of March is a work session with Luann at five thirty. And then the May board meeting, which is weird to say already, but the May board meeting is May nineteenth.
The March thirteenth one, I might not be here. I'm already scheduled to work, like, full day shift, I believe, so we'll see.
Understandable.
Usually everybody's pretty good about switching shifts, so I might be the last go off, so.
Okay, talking points.
I guess, uh, one thing I like to bring up, and I, I didn't wanna bring this up, but during the meeting, I guess, or the, the, when Amy was talking, but um, you know, the, the strength and condition coaches we've brought up, and you know, she said, you know, I don't know why that's relevant in this conference situation. Um, me personally, I, I, you know, I heard a lot of people how we, we can't compete, or we, we feel, I, I'll be honest, I don't think we compete at the War Eagle at the level we're at, either. And I think that's some of the stuff that, you know, I, I'm gonna challenge you, Stan, and, and Amy, to make sure that we, we are getting this thing into here a little bit, cause I, I really just don't think changing conferences is gonna change this, you know, like, the word that Josh uses, I don't know what it means, but, uh.
Systemic problem.
Systemic problem, it, uh, I'll be honest, it's, it's bothersome to me, and the emails that we did receive, and, you know, I, I care where they're coming from, but yeah, there's some deeper lying issues within this, and I mean, I wanted to keep the meeting or that, part of that positive, and I don't wanna bring that up at that point, but that's how I do feel, and I do think we do need to make a change on that somehow, some way. I mean, that's probably another conversation for another time, Stan, but, I mean, it's, it's become, you know, you know, push to shove, or what do we wanna say, I guess, that's just kinda how I feel about it, cause switching to the War Eagle is not gonna make Sibley more competitive today. Probably, I'm, and if anybody thinks that, they're fooling themselves.
I agree, things are more competitive than they were ten, fifteen years ago.
Basketball teams in the War Eagle. It ain't, we ain't getting one in there, I mean, it's, but.
We'll be playing schools around size, but
I feel as a district, we we get in a mindset and we get stuck in that path, and we don't look out. And until.
Or we can't do it, or, or whatever, we're gonna figure it out, and and I think we gotta hold each other accountable to make sure that that happens.
Well, that's why I kinda mentioned, like, we need, the athletes need access to all of the gyms, to the mats in off-seasons. It can't be, uh, well, there's no way to watch them, I'm sure there would be an adult, or make the kids accountable for utilizing, okay, this group of boys is gonna come in and they're gonna practice whatever. Like, hold them accountable some way, like, other schools do it.
Yeah, but the elementary gym is available, right?
Yeah, it's just really hard to practice on that floor, that floor is so dirty, that floor is so slippery, I'm in there all the time. And it does get utilized.
Yeah, I've been there a lot too, here the last month.
Boys don't wanna practice in there.
There's not a lot of people there when I'm there, I know that.
Yeah.
I get it, it's not perfect, but, I mean, it, it's, it's definitely nicer than a lot of schools have. Especially in the War Eagle Conference.
It is, but we also have two other gyms, other schools use their gyms, like, like the Lion uses their good gyms. I've been there, I've watched them.
I'm not saying we can't use those gyms, but I'd really like to see, I mean, to excuse that we don't have access to gyms, we do have access to gyms.
We have to get the access from the A D.
Well, we have access.
I tried physically, personally, myself, and so did Carson Marco two years ago, when we tried, he got a travel basketball team. I tried, Carson Marco tried, I wanna say Ashton Ryder tried. We could not get access to any gym but the elementary, we couldn't even get access to practice jerseys for a good three weeks. We all went through the A D.
I've had numerous complaints.
And I'm just, it's nothing, I love the A D as a personal person, I've had so many complaints about it, I just think that that position needs to be stepped up. So that these student athletes can have better access to stuff, can get some better programs, even semi at the, the elementary level. These little kids need, they need more. I don't know how to get it better, but something, I don't know what the answer is.
I don't know, maybe this is something that, you know, um, I'm just trying to keep the focus here, we're on talking points, I think we need to
Um, maybe, as a talking point, um. What's the word I'm looking for, we need to, we maybe need to form, I don't know, I don't wanna say a task force, I don't wanna say a committee. But something that we can look at, but we need input from people like Amy, we need input from people like Stan. As to what we can utilize, the reason why we have really good facilities are there cared for, my concern is if we just open that up. Who is gonna be cleaning up afterwards, who's going to be, you know, we spend a lot of money, we see those dollars spent, so we spend a lot of money. Um, I think as far as like, you know, a lot of towns, the Sibley routine included, we have traveling teams, those are all. Things that people organize on their own, it's not a school event, can we use facilities? Yeah, if it's, if they're available and if it meets what goes along with the school, so. I think those are things that we maybe need to have some more discussions and maybe, I don't know, if we need to have a, we have our finance committee and this committee and. Um, that committee, but I don't know if we need that, but maybe something that we need to discuss. So, any other talking points?
I do agree with Jamie, I don't think going to War Eagle is a fix, it's not a fix, I think it's just a competition. Level that we see or the students see is at their level, they don't have forty on the bench and we have ten, so in their mentality, they're, maybe go into it with a better. Aspect, thought process, maybe.
We'll find out.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that, I.
Right, we'll be, we'll be at schools our size, yeah.
Right, okay, any other talking points, I really did appreciate the de cap presentation, I think it's very confusing, it's not. That, I mean, it's relatively new, um, but I think what it's making available to our students is really good and. Yeah, I do agree, it's like the expectations are, are change, change, change each year, and I think, okay, we got this score now and hopefully they don't. Change the rubric on us again next year, but you never know, but moving in the right direction and, and just jumping through the hoops of getting our score higher. Is important with the state, so I appreciate the hard work on, on their part, all those involved with the de cap process. Because it is, uh, considering one in Jordan Mending's been a helpful part of that for this district too. Any other talking points? Okay. Then is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the income surtax that, in my mind, it's like on, on the state.
I don't need to sign anything.
I just have minutes.
Okay.
It's a separate line item that gets deducted or that you have to pay, and that's based on percentage, every school is used to not take every, the live schools are always different. Is that the same thing or not?
Um, the income surtax is actually, it's a tax on, it's a tax on people's income tax.
Yeah.
And I got this doc.
Is what it is, some, some schools don't necessarily use it.
Yep, they put it at zero.
They, they could put it at zero, right, some schools do, you do it to offset property taxes.
So.
Oh, I thought there was something that came already.
Because the dollars you don't.